And he has been writing, talking, speaking on the Vedic concepts for many, many years now. So it's a privilege to have such a distinguished person guiding us for the first two chapters of the curriculum. So from now on, I'm giving the control to Dr. Sudhir Anand, who will start his talk. During the talk, probably it will be just one way we'll be listening. But then in the middle, he will give us the opportunity to ask questions and then, you know, he will give the answers. So we have scheduled this session for one and a half hours. And that will be mix of probably he will go over the first chapter, then open the forum for question answers. And then he will start the second chapter and then we'll do the question answers. Dr. Sudhirji, over to you.
Thank you so much, Vishuji and Bhuvneshi. I think first of all, I want to thank both of them for making all the effort to create Vedat and start the process. This is the first session, as you know, and if there any glitches, please bear with it. Hopefully, there'll be no glitches. And so I want to welcome everybody to the first session. I'll be covering two chapters, as Vishuji said. One will be what is Dharm? And second part is what does Hinduism signify? So I will not exactly, you know, be reading the curriculum. That was not the purpose of my presentation. Curriculum pages you have, it'll cover almost everything what's in there. But it will not be reading line by line, you know, to cover it. But I'll try to make it more meaningful. So let's start with what is Dharm? Dharm has been defined in two ways, but actually the two are quite complementary. First definition of Dharm has been that what is the innate attribute of a thing? So let's look at fire, for example. Fire is hot. Heat is, then fire is Dharm. Similarly, iron ball is solid. You can't squish it like you can do a tennis ball or rubber ball. So this hard solidness is iron's Dharm. So one can ask then, you know, can you apply the same kind of rule to human beings to define Dharm? Answer is yes, even though Dharm typically is defined a little differently, as you probably read in the curriculum. So then question comes in, what is human being's Dharm according to this definition I used? The human being's Dharm is to be a human being. Now, it may sound like a silly definition because all I've done is repeat the words. Merely stating the words I said, human being, Dharm is to be a human being. But actually, it has a little more meaning there. In where it has been called for, you know, Dharm is to be a manur bhav. And Swamiji, which means manur bhav means in Sanskrit, when we use that, it to be a human being. So Swami defined a manur is a person who understands the suffering or pain and the joys of another human being, just like their own. So it means whatever you feel, you know, the joys and pains, similarly, other people feel similar joys and pains. And if you can understand that and appreciate that, you already started following Dharm. Sanskrit, there's a slok which is called na atmani pratikulani paresham samacharit, which means do not do unto others what you would not like done to yourself. It is same as the golden rule, where we said do unto others as you would like them to do to you. So this is where that manur bhav and where I said, that is the human being's attribute. Now, if you don't even have that attribute as a human being and all you wanted to exploit people according to Vedic tradition, that person will be called, I'll sort and I'll expand on that a little bit later on again. And if you really got qualities which are great, that you're such a generous person, you're always giving, never asking anything in return, then for that we use not just manur bhav, that person become a dev bhav. That person is really beyond even a simple manur bhav. So that person, their person Dharm is then to be generous, giving to deserving people without asking anything in return. So now coming to the standard definitions of Dharm, which we usually use. In Vasheshik Dharshan says, Dharm is all deeds that are good for a person in this life and future lives also. So this abhuta definition is there on page two of the curriculum of this chapter. So any deed or any karam you do, which will be helpful to you, which will make further progress in your life, in this life or for future lives until you reach moksh, will be called Dharm. Now, Manu has defined Dharm in two different ways. One is the long definition where he's got ten different lakshana or ten different qualities that define Dharm. And there he starts with driti, number one, which means being thoughtful and being steadfast. Once you made a right decision, then do not, you know, waver from it. Carry it out, if you've made a right decision, don't let people dissuade you out of that easily. Second is shama, which means forgiveness. That think of the other person, again, it comes back to the manur bhav which I said, that circumstances were similar and you had made the mistake. Would you like somebody to forgive you if you had done something unintentionally? Or would you like them to punish you even when you made a mistake, genuine mistake? So that is forgiveness. Third is dharm, which means controlling over your mind and not be impulsive. Make thoughtful decisions as driti before said. Number four is stha, which means do not steal or covet that belongs to others. And it indirectly implies do not be greedy, basically. The fifth one is shauch, which means cleanliness, which will be both outer cleanliness. So having, you know, it's like bathing, washing, that cleans your outside. Whereas truth and thinking clean your inside, that's what Manu has said. So and swadhy is the other thing which I bring up at this time. Reading scriptures, discussing them with, you know, learned people, all those bring your inner cleanliness. Where you think about what you do in your daily life and how can you improve your daily life. Indriya nigra is the next one, which is number six, is controlling your senses and not indulging it in bad habits. It's like eating too much, you know, watching depraved movies or listening to bad music. All those things will come under indriya nigra. Then it talks about vidya, which is that learning is part of being, part of Dharm, which is gaining knowledge, both of secular subjects as well as spiritual subjects. So there'll be vidya, next one is dhid. And what you, what you, you know, read or gain knowledge derives some wisdom from that. So the learning process in Vedic scriptures has always been shavan. Or you can read, shavan or reading can be alternated. Manan, that means then think about it. And then nididhyasana is the next step, number three, which means come to a conclusion. What is right, what is wrong? Just because you heard something, just because you read something doesn't make it right automatically. You've got to make a decision. And then fourth step of that of learning is always been called sakshatka, which is putting into your daily life practice. And I'll come back to this part of practice again in a short while. Then the ninth segment lakshana or quality of Dharm is satya, which is actually the most important aspect of Dharm. And in many places, people say satyoparma dharma. And last one is akrod, which is controlling anger. But of these, if you ask me, you know, driti and satya will be the most important. But everything is important, each one has its own value. Now, what I said about, for example, shama, this only applies to individual Dharm I'm talking about. The Dharm for a nation is very different, which is called raj Dharm. A raj Dharm is not forgiveness. If, you know, a person is doing really, really bad deeds, they need to be punished appropriately. But what you do as an individual, especially for a, you know, unintentional mistake, that is where forgiveness comes in. So the second definition Manuji gives for Dharm is that acharo paramodharma. It emphasizes all the ten things which I mentioned before, that until you put them in practice, which is sakshatka, which I used the word before, until you put them in practice, that doesn't, you know, it doesn't become real Dharm, then all you got is knowledge. Practice is where the real Dharm is. Now, the curriculum talks about three aspects of Dharm, as you know. So let me come, come to that. But before I go on to the three aspects, let me use a practical example. Right, you are walking, you know, on a street, you find a wallet or a purse and you find, you know, hundred fifty dollars in it. But you also notice the wallet or the purse has the address of a person. So what are your choices? Your choice is you can keep the money and call it finder's keeper's. Or you can make effort to find the person, the owner, and return the money to the person. Now, this is something, you know, this is what Dharm teaches you. That to, that you should go and return the money to whom it belongs. That the person may need money to feed his family for all you know. Human beings do that. Then animal species, it's not where we find that. And that's a huge difference between animals and human beings, that we have Dharm. Animals work by instinct and what is in their personal interest and not what necessarily is good for any other animal. This you can call altruism to, thinking of others, welfare for others, being generous. So that is a quality, very important part of Dharm, thinking of the other person's needs too, just like you think of your own needs. So generally, as you know, we use the word religion and Dharm alternately. To me, Dharm is a little more than religion, I would say, because religion is usually associated with dogma. It doesn't necessarily always seek truth, it just orders people to follow something. Dharm makes you think. So even though we use the word interchangeably, I want you to keep that in mind, Dharm has got a little deeper meaning than that. Your search is for truth and being generous along with that. Whereas in religion, it's to follow the dogmas or dictates of, you know, religion as they've been dictated. Every religion, as the curriculum says, got three components. Usually, it means a belief in a supreme, you know, god or a founder. And I'm using our founder because in case of that Buddha, in Buddhism, for example, is believing in the founder. Then it's, every religion's got some rituals or ceremonies. And all religions actually talk about, you know, living to or putting in practice, in action. So then you can ask, in our definition of Dharm, when we define Dharm, both, you know, with all two or three ways, I didn't even use the word god there. So where does God fit in Vedic Dharm? God is absolutely essential to Vedic Dharm, I want you to know. One is, but before we move, one has to know what God's actual or correct attributes. In the next lecture, you know, this will be discussed much more in detail. But I'm going to use one minor example. We use the word isha vasamidam sarvam, which means god, you know, attribute is god is omnipresent, he's present everywhere. We have, you know, songs even saying prabhu ka shanshan, you know, vashe. So if one, then if you really believe in the god is everywhere, then watching over one's actions and is watching over your actions and one will reward you appropriately. I think that, if you truly believe that part now, that god is watching whatever you do, I think you'll refrain from doing a bad deed, like cheating or stealing. Because most people are afraid of being caught more than actually cheating. You know, that's been the general observation. But when your turn comes and you believe in god as that he's actually watching everything what you're doing, then I think, you know, that even if nobody else is watching what you're doing, god is always there watching you and they'll prevent you from doing the wrong deed. On the other hand, if one believes that, you know, god only exists in the temple, in the murthy, in the church, in the mosque, then they feel, you know, they can get away, not being caught, and they can do the bad deed to them. So that was one, where does god fit in? Second aspect, as the curriculum says, is role of ritual or ceremony. In Vedic Dharm, we have also in that called satsang. Now, as you know, the word satsang, Sanskrit words have a beauty. Every word actually has, just not, you know, it has a meaning and the roots where it comes from. Sat means truth, something which is permanent, is company or truth seeker. Sang means you're with them. So satsang means company or truth seekers. So why is satsang important? Why is ceremony important? It is during the satsang typically, when a child or a new person, you know, who joins the satsang, usually will gain new knowledge from a person who's a lecturer, who's giving a lecture. They will see how things are conducted. This is also, you'll learn how to practically apply Dharm or the virtues which you have learnt in your life. It'll teach you how to do sandhya havan, how to practice yoga correctly, what is correct yoga and what is, you know, fake yoga, which is being pushed a lot these days. So this is the second pass, why ritual and satsang are important. Third aspect is practicing a moral life. So as I said before, is acharo paramodharma. That the most important thing in Dharm again is living, practicing in life, not only knowing, because knowing is a very, is important component. You have to know the right thing, you have to know the truth, what truth is. But until you follow it, it's just knowing. And until you follow it in life, that's when actually you're practicing Dharm. So there was one other aspect which had come in, in the curriculum. Hello? How do we differ, you know, from animals? So there is a slok in, you know, I think it's in one of the, one of the shashts where it says, you know, ahar, nidra, matthun, those are common between animals and humans. It is Dharm which is differentiate that. You can even add, ahar means eating and drinking. Nidra, of course, means sleeping or resting. Matthun will means that, you know, sex to procreate. And I'm adding one more, that fear of pain and death is there in animals, just like in human beings. But animals are only interested in making their needs met. And if they're a pack animal, perhaps the need of their pack. But they're not interested in welfare of others. And this sense, they are, you know, very self-centered. Whereas, as I said before, human beings are Dharm to think of the welfare of others, who are not directly related to you, they're part of the being, of the human beings or humanity. So Dharm teaches us to take care of humanity. Of course, a human being can behave like animal too. You know, then as I said before, we do call them asur, which means, you know, they're, they don't have the proper sur, they don't follow, you know, correct things. And if they're really worse than that, we even call them rakshas or pichat. Those are the very worst kind of asur you can think of. Next question one might ask is, what are the benefits of following Dharm? You know, why should one be virtuous? So our shashts say that the benefits of following Dharm are both in this life as well as in future. They take us more and more towards god and eventually they'll take us to, you know, moksh. But even if you don't reach moksh in this life or the end of this life, at least by the next life when you're born, you'll be in a higher station and you'll have even more opportunity to move on further, closer to god. So that cycle will go on until you reach moksh. So second benefit will be that it increases your willpower. So anybody's learned driti, you know, he understands that even hundred people want to fall in a pit, that person doesn't have to follow them in the pit. If hundred people want to lie, he does not have to lie because hundred lies do not make a truth. Hundred wrongs, they never made it right. That's what the kind of willpower a person acquires, a person who follows Dharm. Third thing, it gives them mental peace. They have their own inner peace because they feel god is a companion who's giving them peace. They know they're following the right path. As we always said, a liar has to invent hundred more, you know, many more lies to shield their lie. Whereas a truth seeker doesn't need any shield. What he said is truth and that's all he needs to do, he's got that peace there. Third thing, it teaches you fearlessness. It makes you more secure in who you are. Again, you know, god is your companion, Dharm is your shield, you're on the right path. And the very worst one could do actually, maybe the, you know, you may have to die on that behalf, but you're getting closer to god even when you do that. And I'm not saying one has to do that all the time, this is only, I'm using an extreme example. We have many examples in our religion where people died for truth. Swami Dhananjee was poisoned many, many times, you know, sixteen times, as people say, to not be swayed from truth. And also people have said that your ability to, you know, tackle problems improves, your concentrating ability improves. And even if the worst happens, the suffering comes in your life, you're able to deal it much, much better than if you don't have Dharm on your side. And after death, you're reborn again as a higher human being and getting closer to moksh. So the next issue I'm going to deal with is science and religion. Science and Dharm, you can say. Truth is the basis of Vedic Dharm, as I told you before, that is part of the definition. Physical science, the main goal is also seeking truth, you know, finding, you know, it's sometimes it's invention, sometimes it's a discovery, but they're seeking truth. So Dharm and religion should go together, Dharm and science should always go together. Dharm is not dogma, as I said before, religions can be a dogma. I think when Catholic Church, dogma was that, you know, the sun revolves around the earth. It made people believe it. I think we had Galileo and I'm blocking the other astronomer's name, who were, you know, other one was put to death. Galileo was pretty much put into prison most of his life. And as you know, the fourth principle, Ari Samaj also talks about that always we should be eager to follow truth, whatever it is, and reject untruth, whatever it takes. Dharma, of course, in addition to like, physical science only teaches you about physical world. Dharma not only encourages you to learn about physical truth, it also teaches you spiritual truth and how to attain god realization. As I said before, it'll teach you like, for example, when it says god is omnipresent, what does it really mean? It actually means you have to really understand that it's omnipresent and, and you have to feel it that way in your daily life. So I'll end this presentation by saying, our Dharm is called Vedic Dharm. Hindu word comes way, way later, I want you to know. It evolved from Vedic Dharm, but unfortunately, it has, you know, corrupted many of the teachings of Vedas in it. So the Hindu Dharm, as we usually use the word, has got many corrupt practices which are not in the Vedas. But our pure Vedic Dharm is, its teachings are eternal, you know, they don't change with time. You know, and that is why it's called sanatan. Should sanatan, Vedic Dharm people add, sometimes you say add sanatan. And even if you don't add those words, Vedic Dharm by nature is a sanatan Dharm. Its teachings are universal, as I said, they're not affected by time, place. And they're not history-centric, based on any one person's teaching, whether it be Ram, Krishna, Vishnu, Shiva, Buddha, Christ. It really is based on god's teaching, which are eternal for the welfare of all mankind and not welfare for a select people. And that's where I want to end. So I'll be open to questions at this stage and then we can talk about Hindu Dharm later on.
Thank you, Dr. Sudhir Anandji. This is Bhuvnesh Khosla. So currently, we have everybody muted just so we wouldn't have any disruptions. I know the people who are on the phone, they're also muted. But if anybody who's actually logged on to the computer, if you could put a message in your chat window to say you have a question, I can unmute.
I don't have my computer on even, I don't have computer on.
Okay, that's okay. I'm watching it.
Yeah, I'm watching.
Or what I'll do is I'll go ahead and unmute everybody for five minutes, let's try that.
Namaste.
Yes, I have a question. Does the phrase, I think it's in Mahabharata, dharma rakshit, rakshi, rakshitah. Yes, how does that fit in in the whole context of, of Dharma? I think Manu also said it, but I'm not sure.
I think you're right, that comes from Mahabharata. Basically, what it says is that if you follow Dharm properly, it will protect you too. And if you don't protect it, it will cause your vinash too. So I think, but keep that in mind, the Dharm definition which I gave from Manu Smithi, that's the kind of Dharm it's talking about. It protects you because it gives you willpower, the benefits which when I talked about. It gives you the willpower, mental peace, fearlessness, you know, courage, concentrating ability. All those are, is the way it protects you.
But do we have different kind of dharaba, like kul dharaba, Dharma, universal dharaba, individual dharaba?
What I defined is all, sorry, what I defined is all universal Dharm, you know, this applies to everybody. Now, kul Dharma etc. are much later additions. So there I can address that question is that, you know, our Arya society was divided into four groups. Not based on birth, and that's what I want to be very clear about the word kul. Because kul often is meant to go through, you know. I am using the word kul here more in the sense, the Arya Brahman, Shatriya, and that is by your deeds and actions, not by your birth. So what's expected of a Brahman is different than what's expected from a Shatriya or what is expected from a vesh, what's expected from a shudra. So that way, I think, yes.
Yes, my follow-up question.
Hello?
Yes, my follow-up question. You know, you can say the moon has its own Dharma, which makes it follow the scientific rule and go around and whatever it does in space. These are the only kind of dharba that are true. The other kind of dharba, I think, is temporary.
No, truth is Dharma forever. It's not temporary to me.
I see. All right, thank you, Diane, my question. Thank you very much.
Do we have any more questions on the first chapter?
No, it's just a question of Dharma I had. Because when you read different texts or even if you Google the word Dharma, you see so many different application.
I think the problem with Wikipedia is, I'm using as an example, is that, you know, it's based on the learning and the bias of the person who answers them. I think especially Hindu religion is often very poorly portrayed in Wikipedia. And that's all I can say.
Because I tried a different approach and my approach is, okay, let's go to the verbal root of the word. And when you go to dr, you see that anything that supports and gives life and gives progress, that's Dharma. But I don't know how.
One second, let me intervene, this is Vishu, Namasteji. My humble request is that we leave the discussion to the scope of the chapter. I know there are, there can be, the discussion can go on and on. But since we have twenty more participants, I'm requesting that if they have any questions, especially the youth and the kids and any young parents, if they have any more questions, they can ask now.
Okay, I had a question. Is worshiping god following Dharma?
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely. But it has to be done correctly though.
Okay.
As long as you're doing correctly and, you know, you understand who god is, then answer is yes, absolutely.
How do you define correctly?
Well, first of all, I think you will get lot more on the attributes of god in the next, you know, time. And I think correctly, you know, we have three components of worship. It's called Suti, Prasna, and Upasana. Suti is basically recognizing what God's attributes are, and incorporating whatever component of that you can, you know, in your life. If we say God is truth, how much truth have you adopted? If God is kind, how much kindness have you adopted in life? So that's the Suti part, where you acknowledge these are the qualities God has, and the innumerable qualities you can add to God. So that's Suti part. Prasna is, after having made all your best effort, that you want to achieve something, asking God's help. So why is that important, you could ask, that is to remove your vanity? That's when you're doing prasna. But you have to make all your best effort, and you have to ask for something which is virtuous, which is practical. You know, if somebody goes and prays that God make me king of the world, that's not prasna, that's foolishness, basically. Excuse me. And third component comes with upasana, which means, up means close, asan means getting closer and closer to God, and that's where our real yoga comes in. So that is the way worship is. So sandhya can be, some means good, dha means dhan, which means, you know, meditating on God. So sandhya is a form of worship. Worship does not mean going to a temple and, you know, bowing before, you know, or, you know, like in other religions that do, that they have to, you know, prostrate yourself, or you have to, you know, make cross in front of your chest, in front of, you know, Christ picture or Aries picture, that's not Dharam, that's not, you know, practicing correctly. Correcting is, correct practicing is changing your life every day, and trying to meditate, I think, in a correct way, to Rajyog or to Sanghalayog.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, let's take another call if someone has any question, otherwise, we'll move to the second chapter, and then we'll mute everyone. Okay, Bhuvneshji, I think, let's move to the chapter two, and you may want to mute everyone else except you and Dr. Dhananjee.
Thank you, Vishnuji. So I'm going to mute everybody, and then I'll unmute Dr. Sudhir Dhananjee and Vishnuji.
So I will start with chapter number two now, which is on Hindu religion and Hindu society. Shall I go ahead, uh, Bhuvneshji?
Yes, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, okay. So the next chapter is on Hindu religion and Hindu society. Uh, th- this is a difficult topic in some ways, because the word Hindu is got, you know, is very encompassing word in a way, and how one wants to define it again differs somewhat. But I'll start with a little bit, give a little historic perspective, that the old name of India was not Hindustan. Old name of India was Aryavrat, or Bharat, as the word Mahabharata says. The word Hindu does not even exist in any of our ancient scriptures, whether it be Ved, whether it be Upanishad, whether it be, you know, Brahman grant, Darshan grant, Ramayan, Mahabharata, Gita, and even Purans, which are relatively recent, you know, within the past thousand to fifteen hundred, two thousand years, they don't have any word Hindu. So Hindu word is a corruption of the word Sindhu. Sindhu River, as you know, is what in Europeans are called Indus River, is the river which flows from Himalaya to, uh, you know, along the west, and ends in the, you know, what is now called Arabian Sea, on the western side, um, of, in Pakistan, uh, but it was obviously a part of India at that time. The Persians, you know, they do have the word Sab somewhere, but they typically, every word which is Sae in Sanskrit, they use the word Ha for that. Where they use the word for Sapta, it became Hafta, uh, and similarly, many of these words were changed, and same way Sindhu became Hindu River there, something. And anybody who lived around Indus River, and further south and east of that, which is the remaining part of India, was basically called, you know, people who lived there were called Hindus. The word really becomes more prominent and used in India after the Muslims rulers invaded India. In the past six, seven hundred years, for the Muslim rulers to differentiate between the Muslim population from the people living there, you know, with a large majority, all of those people who were living there before, or you could say native people of India, were all called Hindus. But as I told you before, that, you know, in the previous talk too, that Vedic Dharam by this time had been corrupted into many, many, uh, you know, some pradais, sects, whether you call Vashna sect, Shiv, you know, or Shavai sect, Shakta sect, which follow, you know, Kali, Durga, or other, uh, you know, female deities, you can say. Murthy puja was widely practiced by this time. And the religion which was being practiced at that time was typically called, you know, Hindu, uh, you know, Hindu religion, or Hindu Majab, they called it, and the Europeans called that Hinduism. So that's the way the word Hindu has come in. That is not our Vedic Dharam though, one has to be very, very clear what originally was, but that is the way most of us have called Dharam of India, who, you know, who were not Christians or Muslims, they were all Hindus. Uh, now, when you look at Vedic Dharam origination, our original scriptures, as we know, Vedas are considered to be revealed by God to specially endowed human beings, which are called our four Adi Rishis, and who then propagated Vedic Dharam. Our original scriptures were not founded by a single human being, like Christianity or Islam had been, uh, and whereas, as Hindu Dharam evolved, then it became many, many some pradais, where one, you can call the word deity, if you want it that way, became more important to them, to the Vashna people. Vishnu was more important as incarnation of God, whereas for the Shiv people, or Shavais, uh, you know, Shiv was more important, uh, and that's the way the Hindu religion, you know, or Hindu Dharam came along. Uh, whereas people of ancient India called themselves Arya, the word which actually means, you know, noble persons, uh, and they did not call that the Hindus either. So our nation was called Aryavrat, people living there were called, you know, Aryas. Aryas did not migrate from anywhere else, uh, whereas, you know, all western, you know, readers, I mean, western lecturers, if you listen to them, if you go to Wikipedia, often all you will read will be that, you know, Aryans immigrated to India from, you know, somewhere in the Caucasus region, uh, whereas, in, Hindus, or I should say, Arya people always called themselves as the original habit, inhabitants, uh, what gr, will be, you know, in, some ways we'll have to call that Greater India at this stage, because it included that time, you know, all of India, uh, in the north, that included Punjab, UP, Haryana, Himachal Pradesh, Kashmir, in the central India, and anything up to Windhachal Pradesh, uh, in the east, it'll be up to, uh, you know, Brahmaputra, all of those areas were considered Aryavrat. Uh, so what's become now Pakistan, Afghanistan, was also included as part of the Aryavrat. Uh, there were other ethnic groups in India too, which were called, you know, Dravidians, Kols, Nagas, Kirat, Wanas, Mun type, other groups too, which were there. Uh, but why can one say that, you know, why most of us, you know, at least who belong to Arya Dharam, believe that Aryas did not come from outside, as Westerns have tried to portray us, is that there really no pre-Vedic Sanskrit words which exist in any of these areas as names or places. Now, if, for example, you come to America, you, you know, go, name of many states, as you know, like Massachusetts, and many others, are actually names which are derived from Native American languages. But all our names, you know, in India, the old names, which when you look at, they are not derived from any other language, but they belong to Sanskrit. Any nations, any group who comes from outside usually has a history, you know, where they came from, they like to be proud of that place. Arya groups have never had any other, you know, place where they came from, they claim. They were always there, that is their homeland. Uh, so there is the theory now, of course, you know, alternate theory being pushed, some people agree with it, some don't, is called the out of India, uh, versus, you know, the migration theory, and out of, out of India theory is also there as an alternate theory now. And, you know, people criticize that in, in the western literature, but I think for Arya people, that is, uh, our, you know, basically heritage, that's where we always belonged, and we have never believed we came from anywhere outside. So Arya society, and of course now, later on, it became Hindu society too, is being divided into four groups, the Brahman, Shatrye, Vesh, and Shudra. These groups are occupational groups, with what one did. One question be asked, that, you know, the expectation from each one was a little different, and that was the Dharam of that group, if you want to include the word Dharam in that sense. Brahman was expected to, his learning was the most important issue with them, and teaching them. Shatrye was to defend, and even be willing to die for the nation to defend, and they were the rulers and administrators. Vesh people were the business people, and their main goal was to, you know, earn money for every, for themselves, and then spread that money to the whole society. So in a way, they were a very important group. Uh, it was not to hoard money, it was to actually redistribute the money for every group. And Shudra was something who didn't qualify for anything else, provided the labor to everybody, was a Shudra. Initially, it was all based on abilities, and one could easily convert from one to the other. But as things happened, and as Dharam starts to deteriorate, uh, it became hereditary. It was very convenient for somebody who's a king's son to, that I'll be king automatically, whether you deserved it or not, and that's the way it got propagated. So Brahman and Shatrye is almost like, looks like colluded, to keep themselves always at the highest pedestals of the society, so they could exploit others. And that, some of that did become part of Hindu Dharam later on, but this was not in the original Vedic Dharam. Uh, also, as time went by, then Vedic Dharam got corrupted into various sects, as I said before, to Vashna, Shavai, uh, you know, Shakta, those were the older ones, and now, of course, the number of some pradais are endless. We got all kinds of fake gurus around, but probably the hundred some pradais, it won't surprise me in India, but I don't know the exact number, I'm just saying that a large number of some pradais, you got Swamiradhya some prada, you got Brahma Kumari some prada, you got so many sects are available now. Uh, but this is all happened when Vedic Dharam practices, you know, started to get corrupted. Uh, some reformers came along in between, and they actually started their own new Dharam even, which was not even part of Vedic Dharam, because, which was not even part of Hindu Dharam. And where does Vedic Dharam and Hindu Dharam connect? Let me start there first. I, the belief in God is there, all Hindus believe in, you know, Paramatma, you can say, no, no Hindu will call any other, you know, whichever group this belong to, Om word is always used for Paramatma, for example. So there are some things which are still common in Vedic Dharam and Hindu Dharam. We do believe in Karam theory, we do believe in reincarnation, uh, we do believe in definition of Dharam, so a lot of things are still common, but a lot of corruptions have been added. But when the reformers came, they actually started new Dharam, like Buddha came, and he started Buddha Dharam, Mahavir came, he started Mahavir Dharam. Shankaracharya, when he came, he followed Hindu Dharam, but he started this Advait, which was not part of old Hindu relig, Vedic Dharam, so now the Advait became part of Hindu Dharam too. Uh, Guru Nanakji came, and he started, you know, his own, uh, six religion, Kabir Panti's are there too, who follow Kabir. They're part of Hindu Dharam on the whole, they'll be considered, but they again believe in, you know, their own beliefs too. The, the problem, of course, the teachings of these reformers are not totally valid by the criteria which one can use as far as Dharam goes. And even within these groups, when you look at Buddha Dharam or Jain Dharam, it has again been further modified, corrupted by their followers. Buddha Dharam, for example, has got, you know, several separate groups now, Mahayana group, and other groups are there. So each one can, you know, expand further, uh, but is it following the basic definition of Dharam, which I defined in the previous chapter, that, you know, and as someone can tell, they don't meet those criterias. Uh, so all over India, when you look at Hindus, you know, whether they be in Punjab, Rajasthan, Bengal, Telugu, you know, in south Gujarat, they do follow various Hindu sects, which have evolved over time from Vedic Dharam, and what they collectively now are called Hindu Dharam, Hindu religion, or Hinduism. And that is what Hinduism is, the way I look at it. Uh, second part I can add is that, you know, India was, throughout its history, was considered a center for learning. Uh, this is from ancient times, there were universities from Takshila to the other universities which were there too, as a center of learning, which was both for spiritual and secular learning. And from India, you know, the Dharam was spread into many other parts of the world also, uh, especially when you look at, I would say, you know, Burma and beyond, so you can look at Burma, Ceylon, Thailand, Indonesia, Cambodia, Laos, and southeast Asia, Indonesia. And in the last two hundred years, of course, Hindu religion has spread into, you know, other places too, where the British were often ruling, from, there'll be Fiji, Guyana, West Indies, Suriname, Mauritius, um, and then to Europe and America too. So this is the way Hindu religion has been spread, but as you said, we have to keep in perspective that Vedic Dharam and Hindu Dharam are different in some ways, even though there are many commonesses too, but there are differences too. And we follow the Satya Sanatan Vedic Dharam, is all I can say, and I want to stop there. I think it'd be better for any question people have, and that might help explain, you know, uh, further.
Dr. Sudhirji, uh, can you help clarify the Subt Sindhu thing as well?
Uh, why, why don't you go ahead and do that? It's okay if you can do that from where you are. Does that be all right, or you want me to do it?
Well, I think if you do it, I would appreciate that.
Okay. Okay. Uh, I think as much we can tell, um, you know, Subt Sindhu are the seven rivers, there's some question which always comes up, is this mentioned in Ved? I think as, you know, in Aries Samaj, and we strongly believe that, that Vedas have no history, so when the word Sindhu or anything sub comes in there, it doesn't mean the same seven rivers as people are later added on. So that way, Subt Sindhu meant the seven rivers, which were, you know, from Indus and other rivers there, which will be Punjab, you know, what's now Pakistan, uh, that area is being called the Subt Sindhu. Uh, now, is that the only site of Aryas? I think, you know, uh, to me, Aryas were much more spread out than that, than just the Subt Sindhu area, uh, because, you know, they were obviously in areas outside Subt Sindhu too, in central India and other parts, that was all part of Aryavrat. So is Subt Sindhu, uh, but did it include Yamuna and Ganga? I don't know if we have that answer exactly, and I am ignorant there, I'm, you know, admit that. And if somebody knows more, please correct me, okay?
Yeah, the only thing I was, I, I brought this up was that we wanted to emphasize that the word Hindu also came from the Sindhu, uh, word as well. The origination of the word Hindu came from there. And, um, as you, as you clarified, that originally, authentically, we should be called Satya Sanatan Vedic Dharma, but nowadays, in the contemporary world, to out, all the outside world, we are called Hindu, because the philosophy that we follow, and the, the actual Hindu Dharam that we follow, it should rightly be aligned, it will, it ideally should be aligned to Satya Sanatan Hindu, uh, Vedic Hindu Dharma. But for all tactical purposes, uh, we are called Hindus, and that's- But for all practical purposes, uh, we are called Hindus and that's how we are known i- in the modern world. And in, even for the purpose of this test and the, for the curriculum, we are using the word Hindu and Vedic interchangeably. But, but for the practical purposes outside world, it is still a Hindu. So, um, I just want to make that clarification. Uh, Bhuvneshi, um, you may want to open it, uh, for. Um, now it is open for everyone to questions. If you have a question, uh, please speak up. Otherwise you can mute yourselves from your phones, that way there's no background noise coming to others. If you have questions, please speak up.
Hello?
Yeah.
Haa ji, main prabha garb bolo rahi hu.
Boliye.
Mere ek request hai ki ye jo literature humko provide kia gaya hai. Ismein jo sanskrit ki ek ya do line hai. Yadi vo roman ke saas saas sanskrit me bhi likhi jaye toh that will be very, very helpful.
Prabha ji, we'll give it a try. But do you have any question on the curriculum or the explanation that Doctor Anand gave?
No, not at, not right now.
Sudhirji, Vimal here, uh, I have a question. Uh, the, what I have read and what you just said, that we did not, we meaning Aryas did not migrate from anywhere. And, uh, but they did spread out in the world, that's also what you mentioned, right?
Right.
Do you have any information on, uh, what happened, uh, and at what point in history did it happen? That if we were spread out across the globe, when did we shrink?
Globe, I do not know. See this square. Uh, Vimalji, you have asked a very important question. I think the, the problem which we have is that I think the kind of research which needs to be done, which is especially which is pro, you know, Vedic Dharma type has not been done. I, I think, um, so, you know, people c- often claim whatever they want to and, you know, um, push down their, you know, view on others. I think, um, w- we had, I think for the archaeological department of India, basically they followed whatever British left them. The crumbs they left them, they basically kept eating those crumbs rather than, you know, f- make their own new bread, is the way I look at it. The kind of research which needed to be done has not been done. I think some research has been done, so I don't want to get, you know, say, like Dhoulwira and few other this places have been researched. But, uh, I think, I'm blocking the person's name, his last name was Lal, I don't know what his first name was. He had been archaeological director. Only after he retired, he started to start feeling that, you know, we sort of missed out that all the places which are mentioned, for example, Mahabharat, many of those places, those names still exist. Uh, like Vernavat where, uh, Lakshagra was, is now called Vernava. You know, but to go and do proper research, that, you know, if they can find something and after five thousand years in a climate like India, it'll be hard to do. Uh, or Hasnapur research, people are afraid to dig anything under old fort, for example, to show that the, some foundations go back thousands of years really. Uh, because it will hurt the feelings of some minority groups.
Thank you, Sudhirji.
Uh, there's underwater some research, you know, which was started, but, uh, you know, in, especially near Gujarat. But is, is it still being carried out further? I do not know. I think there were some inklings that there are older things there, but, you know, not everybody agreed to it. You know, one projection was it may be as old as twelve thousand years. But, you know, others didn't agree with that. They, all they said was the wood was twelve thousand years old, but it may have nothing to do with, you know, uh, what they found. So until we do proper research, I think, uh, it'll be very hard to answer that question. Uh, I've, the Sanskrit language is such, you know, the westerners to call it proto-Indian language. Proto Indo-European language. But, you know, Sanskrit, when you look at the roots of Sanskrit though, it's very clear each root has a meaning. In proto-Indo-European, it's not as clear when you read, you know, whatever is available in literature or, you know, what I can read a little bit in Wikipedia and other places. So, um, it's a little hard to answer that question, uh, the kind of proof you're asking.
Thank you, Sudhirji.
Namaste, Suvir Anandji, uh, it is, uh, I am Sanjay Sood from Houston. Thank you for the wonderful, uh, explanations you have done. It's very, very good, very helpful. I have a question. So when you're talking about Satishanatan Vedic Dharma and the Hindu Dharma, would it be right to say that, so we started with something which we call Vedic Dharma? And then over the time, we added some extra pieces which don't fit into the puzzle and which are trying, or which are stopping us into getting to the final reality or final upasana or attaining the final aim of, uh, our life, that is the union with the infinite consciousness or with God or Moksha or whatever you want to call it. Would that be appropriate? I mean, so as you said, that there is lot of things which are common, like definition of God or Om, you said, that is same in most of Arya or all the religions or Hindu sects we have. Would it be appropriate that we are now having something more than what we started with or would be, which is more universal?
No, I would go that way. I think we have corrupted it. I think, you know, the whole concept of God, Om is okay, but I think all other names had a, you know, like Vishnu means omnipresent. So, you know, to make, oh, Murti of, uh, you know, Vishnu is not, you know, what was ever called for. The Vedas were very clearly saying that God cannot be described as a Murti ever. Natas pratimasthi, which can be said both, it has no measure and it cannot be represented by a figure. But, you know, all over Hindu religion, we're trying to represent God as a, as a, you know, as a picture, which doesn't make any sense really that, you know, one who has got no picture, how can that be? We have belief in Avtar. So, you know, I've asked some of my, you know, friends that what percentage of God is born as Avtar? One percent, point one percent, eighty percent, hundred percent? So if all, you know, if a hundred percent was born as Avtar, so where is remaining, you know, remaining God left them? Uh, I, I didn't think you get any answers, you know, then they, you know, start saying that you, of course, are, you know, questioning our belief. So, you know, you stop there. I don't know if I answered your question.
Sanjayji, does that answer your question?
Hmm, uh, it m- not exactly to be, uh, truthful, but yeah, I mean, it's a difficult, uh, to answer question, means there are so many things which went wrong along the way. And I think that is, uh, very much, uh, what will happen, means if you start with something really good, over time it would decay. And we have to really make a good effort.
Yep. Uh, I, I think decay is always possible, it's a constant vigil one has to do. And that's what our Dharm Trati requires, that be constant and that's what, I think, you know, Dharma Rakshati Rakshitah, I don't know the exact phrase. That you have to protect Dharma and Dharma protects you back. If you don't protect it, it causes your vinash too. And that's what happened to us, that we did not protect Dharma in the proper way. I think we started believing in miracles. And I think it's a story of Somnath is a very good example, that, you know, or other, where, I, I would go even before that, I think in Sindh it is said that where, you know, the first, uh, Akraman or you can say the, you know, war occurred when the Muslims invaded. So two things happened, one, the priest sided, somehow he was bribed into siding with the Muslim invaders. And second, that, you know, he told, if you see the flag is directed in one way, uh, then don't worry about it, God will protect you, don't fight. And that's what happens to Shatriya who stopped fighting. That happened Somnath, it happened many places. I think that when you stop protecting correct Dharma, you get destroyed. So you have to fight for real Dharma, that's really all I can say. It's practicing in your daily life and protecting it, you know, as a nation too.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Um, the, the correct phrase that we were talking about is Dharmayev hatohanty, dharmo rakshati rakshitaha, tasma dharmo nahantavya, mano dharmo hatovadhit. So Dharma when destroyed, destroys, Dharma protects when it is protected. Therefore, Dharma must not be violated, otherwise violated Dharma destroys us. That's the Manusmiti, uh, log.
Right. Yeah, it is from Manusmiti, you're right. It's not from Mahabharata, you're right, absolutely. I actually have translation, but I didn't remember it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, anyone else has a question? Okay, um, um, okay, so there are a couple of important things that you can note and then we will, will, will probably conclude it. Uh, first thing is that this is the first session for the Readat. Um, the audio system, the recording, the speeches and everything. So if at all you have any feedback, uh, you can email it to us at Readat@Arisamaj.com. It's V D A T at AriSamaj.com. I will be happy to implement your comments in the follow, follow-up sessions. That is one. Um, second thing, um, the next session, that will be on next Sunday, seven thirty PM Eastern Time, will be on the chapters three and four. And the session will be led by Doctor Harish Chandra, who is the Achary at the Arisamaj Foundation. So, um, so we have around fifty registrants as of now and around fifty percent of them are participating. But if you, if you get to know any new registrants, please pass in information, pass this information to them so that they can also be sure to attend the session. We will be putting the recording of this session on our Google Drive link that we are sharing with everyone. So after some time or maybe tomorrow, you can check that, um, uh, check that Google Drive, you will find the recording of this session as well. But someone say something? Um, and what we are also doing is, we are recording the audios, the, just reading the, reading the every chapter and recording the audio, uh, so that it is easier for the participants to listen to them while driving or while on their treadmill. So the audios also are going to be uploaded on the shared curriculum, uh, Google Drive folder. Around four of the chapters are already uploaded and two or three more will come in next day or two. So, but in, within next week, we'll have all the ten chapters audios uploaded onto the, um, onto the curriculum, uh, Google Drive link. Um, also the document that we have, we continuously update it. So whenever you have to read it again, please use the latest one from the drive itself. For example, Prabha ji gave a feedback, we might try to implement it and then, um, you know, we'll update this, we'll update the same document. So you may want to refer to the document, uh, again from the link rather than, uh, using your saved document. Because we already have three updates on the document since the first version and we might do one more in next day or two. So use that document all the time, uh, the, from the link. Um, last but not the least, uh, we definitely want to give, uh, thanks to Doctor Suvir Anandji for his time.
Thank you.
The explanation, um, you know, preparing for it, making himself available on the time. And docs of the knowledge that you pro- you have provided is precious and I'm sure it will help everyone, um, as we move along in this course. Bhuvneshi, uh, do you want to add something?
Uh, no, I just want to thank everybody for joining and hopefully you're finding, uh, this information useful. I do encourage everyone to shout to your friends, family and other Arisamaj members. Uh, adults and youth, sign up for Readat. Uh, you know, more than examination, it's all about, uh, learning and, uh, we're hoping this facilitate, this facilitates, uh, a positive, uh, learning experience and we look forward to everybody's feedback and definitely, thank you, Doctor Sudhir.
You're welcome.
Any question or comment from anyone in the audience? Yeah. Vimalji, any, any question or comment?
May Ramesh bolo rahu.
Namaste.
Namaste. I just, uh, walked in, prayer was doing. I think it was very nice.
Thank you, Doctor.
Yeah, very nice, very nice, great effort.
Bhavna.
I have forwarded this email to a few people.
Very nice. Thank you very much.
First of all, Namaste, Vimal here. Uh, one thing I just wanted to add, uh, if you have any information available on the mock test, which will be available, uh, on our website or on the Facebook, so that participant can get a flavor of what the test is going to look like and get a feel of it. Do you have any dates on that if you want to announce?
Um, yeah, so what we'll do is, uh, we will provide couple of questions every day on the Facebook page. Couple of mock questions, that way people can, uh, have the visibility to Facebook page. They can keep coming to it every day and every day they come, they will find a new question. How, how is that?
So I think the timing question is, it will be about starting next week. So give us just one more week to figure out that.
We can do it, uh, yeah, but definitely no later than next Sunday, but we'll try to do, so, uh, that. And we'll send an email out, uh, to the registrants. The way you have got the email today, we'll send it out. But definitely within coming week. Anything else?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, ji, uh, thank you again for joining and we'll see you all again, uh, next Sunday, seven thirty Eastern Time, uh, with Doctor Harish Chandra ji, uh, leading the session. And, uh, please come prepared with your questions. And if you have a question from this discussion, you can send an email out and we will work it out. Maybe we can request Doctor Suvir Anand to join and then we can, he can answer any follow-up questions. So we are all open, we want to make it interactive and any questions are appreciated. Okay, ji, thank you, everyone. Um, namaste and good night.
Namaste.
Namaste.
Thank you.
Namaste.
Let's, uh, stop the recording.